At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Certainly, Chairwoman. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella. Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri Muedad.
Here.
Let the record reflect, you have nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in prayer and salute to the flag.
Only we ask God, the giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his Spirit on all who work for justice and peace. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title X, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the Office of the County Clerk.
May I have a motion to approve the communications? May I have a second? A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Aye.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri Muedad.
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative on the communications.
Prior to opening the meeting for public comments on resolutions, I would like to ask Fiscal Chair Commissioner Williams to say a few words on tonight's budget adoption.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, good evening to everyone. As Chair of the 2024 Fiscal Committee, I would like to announce that after months of review and state approval, we're prepared for the final vote on this year's budget following tonight's hearing. For the past four years, as many of you know, we have maintained a consistent 0% increase in taxes. However, to uphold our commitment to excellent services and programs, we've made the difficult decision that the 2024 budget will include a 1.75% tax increase driven by inflation, as you all know, and rising operational costs. So despite this adjustment, our AAA credit rating remains strong, reflecting our steadfast fiscal responsibility, and Union County continues to prioritize shared services to maximize resources. We've carefully considered the impact on our residents and worked diligently to minimize it. We appreciate the community's understanding and support as we ensure Union County's exceptional quality of life. And I do, on behalf of my colleagues, I do want to extend my gratitude to our county manager Ed Oatman, our Finance Director Bebe Taylor and her team John Zidzek and Ally Enriquez, and to my colleagues on the Fiscal Committee, including Vice Chairwoman Leon, Commissioners Alexander Mirabella and Sergio Granados, for their hard work in helping to craft this budget. And thank you to everyone involved in this process for their collaborative efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Fiscal Chair Williams. Please note, tonight's public comments are for all resolutions listed on tonight's agenda. However, the Board will be voting specifically on the budget resolutions and the various Chapter 159 budget modifying resolutions after the official public hearing on the budget. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Michael Freeman, 158 Main Street, Woodbridge, New Jersey. I'm the Executive Vice President of New Jersey State PBA. Before I get started with what I'm here for, I need to thank the Board of Commissioners for getting a deep pond in the city of Summit. Bryant Park, I approached Commissioner Granados years ago with the issue of the pond getting overgrown. The project has started. It looks to be effective with about a tenth of the pond done. It's a fascinating process that they're going through, digging out that pond. If you have the opportunity to come up and watch those machines do their work, come on over, sit in my yard, and we can have a cup of coffee. That being said, the reason I'm here is that, as I said, I represent the State PBA Labor Relations, essentially. That's probably 75% of the law enforcement officers in the state of New Jersey, including Sheriff's Departments and County Corrections Officers. Many of those county officers are here in attendance. We're here in support of PBA Local 199. We recognize the fact that the jail, Union County Jail, has to close for the midnight shift. It's a cost-saving measure, we understand it, and we applaud any efforts to save money. Our concern is that the attempts to save money would include layoffs of nine police officers. At the same time, the county is attempting to hire sheriff's officers. As you know, of course, the corrections officers are under the direction of the Sheriff's Department. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Oatman today and with Sheriff Corvelli, and they provided me with some facts, basically. And one of the things that was stated was that the gap program that we're looking to get our corrections officers into through the approval of the county, through the Sheriff's Department, to transfer them into sheriff's officers so that they could continue working for the County of Union, was a one-shot deal in 2021. It was a legal interpretation, which I understand in reading it, but we checked with our representatives from the Police Training Commission, and in fact, that is a misunderstanding. In fact, today Somerset County is running a gap program, regardless of what the statute appears to read from the advice that they got. So my ask here is that you consider taking the employees that you already have that have committed themselves to Union County, who are well aware of the fact that some of them are going to be taking a pay cut in order to gap over from the Corrections Department to the Sheriff's Department, but they want to do that. They want to stay here as county employees. I think the alternative of going out and hiring new people that you don't know, going through the cost of training them for six months where this gap program is only, it's actually six and a half months. The gap program is 12 weeks. The cost associated with that, as I spoke with Mr. Oatman, there is a savings. I worked it out conservatively, about $80,000 in the first six months. Thereafter, it will pick up, but what you will have is members of your employee group that want to be here more than anything else. The unfortunate reality is going out and hiring new people, doing their background checks, doing their psychological exams, sending them to a full basic recruit class, hoping that they make it through to get on to the Sheriff's Department as sheriff's officers. The reality is, many of them are looking to move on. A quarter to a third have done that year over year over year. It happens. The members that are looking to be gapped over have been here for several years. They were laid off, they had an opportunity to go back to another Corrections Department, to go somewhere else. They chose to wait, and they came back to Union County. They're committed to Union County. We're asking that the leadership here in Union County examine the reality of approaching the PTC, ensuring that they can put a gap program together, and in 12 weeks, at the same time that this closure is going to happen for the midnight shift, these members are made sheriff's officers in Union County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Timothy Prohl. I'm General Counsel for PBA Local 199. I see some familiar faces up there. But tonight, it's an unfortunate situation because what really brings us here is a boiling over of contract negotiations where the county basically is leveraging its muscle to negatively impact PBA Local 199 members by threatening this layoff. The layoff is threatened in bad faith. We're in contract negotiations, actually looking for more corrections officers in the Hub, which provides tremendous service to all of the municipalities and to the county itself. Transporting prisoners who are going to be transported to the Essex County facility and taking load off of numerous other law enforcement agencies in the county and at the municipal level, all the way up to the county level, across the board. They're involved in shepherding prisoners and people who are customers for court, so to speak. They are involved in pulling people from the facilities in the municipalities themselves. Closing the night shift itself was a threat that was made in contract negotiations. Basically, we were looking for more corrections officers through the sheriff, and the threat was made by the sheriff that, well, we'll just close the third shift. Well, that was an unfair practice, and we're up at Perk on that now, but we didn't do it right away. Instead, we had our hands full with the FOP who tried to do a perk challenge, which we won and remained the majority representative. That was also mentioned by the sheriff in contract negotiations. Oh, I don't have to deal with you because we have, the FOP might be, we might be dealing with them. So there's unfair practice charges, there's bad faith that are permeating the entirety of this layoff proposal. The cost-saving measure, it's not just about cost savings. There has to be a reason to have cost savings. Union County, through your excellent shepherding and fiscal management, is flush with plenty of cash. You have kept taxes zero for a long time, a 1.75% increase, a very modest increase, very reasonable for the residents. But things cost money. Health costs money. We've talked about safety in the presentations that we saw. We talked about safety numerous times. I've heard it, the prayer that started tonight's meeting talks about justice. Help costs money. You need law enforcement to provide the services. PBA 199's members and the employees of the Hub are taking load off of the municipalities. They're providing safety. The reason we needed more officers was because there's strains and constraints on the system, which is a good system, that we needed to improve. And when we brought those things up, again, in bad faith, the threat was made to cancel the night shift. Then after we came back and wanted to sit down at contract negotiations, it came down to, oh, we're laying everybody off. So that comes in direct retaliation to the proposal to bring on more people, to keep the residents safe, to keep the county safer, to keep each municipality safer. Taking officers out of the Hub and out of that whole program is going to make all the municipalities put a burden on each and every one of them to transport more people, house more people, pull officers off the road to transport people up to Essex County in the middle of the night on a Saturday? If they even work. I know there are some agencies that, I mean, the police departments work, but there are other agencies in the county that don't work on the weekends. So what you have in 199 is a tremendous resource and a valuable resource. And so by doing the bad faith negotiation and tactics, it's actually exposing the county to liability. And that's an issue that at Perk, we're already at Perk on an unfair practice charge for the bad faith that was already exhibited in the negotiations. Civil service is another venue where these things occur. And just at Perk and civil service, which is familiar territory for a lot of people, there's all sorts of reasons why this is a bad idea and also unlawful. So we would ask you to reconsider, because you're really making the residents less safe with this, as well as harming the individuals who are doing an excellent job and have been, in many cases, for years for the county and the residents of the municipalities individually as well. Thank you very much.
Commissioners? How you guys doing this evening? Commissioner Baker? Mr. Oatman, how you guys doing? Mr. Mirabella, how you guys doing? I'm glad to see you somewhere else instead of Atlantic City, but good to see you.
Doug, we have your name in town.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Douglas Swin. I'm the State Delegate for 199. I'm here almost 31 years. This is the worst I have ever seen us being treated. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. That's the only thing, that's the problem. I see you come over there, Ms. Kowalski. How we treat you? Pretty good, right? Front door, how you doing, ma'am? How you doing? Now, if God came to us today, we all about, I'm 60, going on 61 years old. I know if he tapped me on my shoulder today, would we be ready? I can answer that question. We all went to church on Sunday, right? Did we go to church just to go to church to say we wore our next hats? Or we went to church because he said we believe in God and we believe in treating people the way we need to be treated? There's no love there on 15 Elizabeth Town Plaza. None. He would be in threat, you want to take your job, retire, you're old, get out. Something's wrong here. Accountability. You got a whole else to count on. If I'm not dressed right, I come late, you gonna get me, right? That'd be how some accountability. These guys, these families here, got kids. Come on. What we doing here? To get laid off again? You guys got us in this resiliency program. For what? That's more stress. No counsel's over. You're going to take your job. I think we need some grief counseling over there. People hurting, they crying. They blaming everybody but themselves. They blaming everybody but the freeholders, but the sheriff, blaming us. Guys, again, if God tapped you on your shoulder today, would you be ready? But how we treat people, how we treat each other, that's the problem. What happened to the old Democrats of past? Jim Florio, Camden? We was going to get thrown out. Help my mother. Help my mother keep us in the projects. They were going to throw us out of the projects because my mom couldn't pay for it. Seven kids. What happened to that? Bring them back. What is going on? Why we hate each other so much? Why do you hate corrections so much? I don't get it. We don't bother nobody. Everybody want to bother us for some reason. I don't want to, I don't want to say what it is. I don't know. But please, have mercy on us, guys. These guys don't want to lose their jobs. They're coming back to go back on the street again? Go to Essex, Soft Landing? That's not a soft landing. You come over to Essex and do a pile with me. Brother Barrios, they want to come to Essex. They want to come to Essex and do a set around, do a set down with us. Sell them a pile with us. Don't let them know who you are. See how it is. Let me throw some piss in your face. Let them know who you are. Other day, microwave, put lotion in the microwave, threw it in the officer's face. This is what they going through. But they say this is a soft landing. Let a soft landing be, let's gap these guys. So I told, three years ago, I said, let's gap these guys so, no, this is coming again. Three years is here again. Give them their certification so we ain't got to worry about this no more. We worrying about it right here again. Stress on everyone. But we got a brand-new resiliency program. For what? Just say we got it? I appreciate you guys for having me here today. Brother Baker, you know me, know me for years. Job Corps. I'm that same guy, man. I'm that same good man. I'm not changing. About being right in what's right. It's about what's doing right for the public, doing right for our workers here. That's what's right. I want to thank everybody for coming, guys. I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Good civil class, guys. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you, guys. My time is up. Thank you, guys. Next. I know we need something that I can talk. Let's get up and do what we gotta do.
My salutation is extended to all in attendance of this Board of Commissioners meeting on the 8th day of May 2024. My name is Lynn Stellis of Linden, and I am grateful for the opportunity to stand here as a resident of Union County to discuss matters affecting the prosperity of this county. I have also been an employee of Union County for about 16 years as a correctional police officer, now under the management of the Sheriff's Department since 2021 as a result of shared services. As I stand here, I do not stand as an officer. I represent myself as a taxpayer in this county who will share observations. Union County, though the last county in New Jersey established among 21 counties, has some of the oldest towns founded in the county, in New Jersey and even in the United States at large. Elizabeth, New Jersey, is a very county seat of Union County and was founded in 1664. Holding over 30 historic sites, our current courthouse was built in 1931, and our jail is architecturally designed to be connected to the courthouse, which can hold over 1,000 incarcerated individuals. The incarcerated individuals are escorted through an internal bridge to ensure timely, in-person court appearances, per the law. Families, attorneys, and friends of incarcerated individuals were able to visit their loved ones within the jurisdiction of where the alleged crime had been committed. A significant amount of taxpayers' money went into the construction of the jail in the late 80s and early 90s. In 2021, Union County effectuated an agreement that was signed in 2020 of shared services with Essex County. Over 200 correction officers with various ranks were affected by way of unforeseen intergovernmental transfers and others, including myself, laid off from work. The corrections officers who experienced the consequences of the countywide layoffs and transfers were also the ones who worked during the global pandemic without hazard pay. The irony of it all, departments that were not fully activated were allowed to work from the convenience of their homes or may not have been required to work at all due to closing, yet they received hazard pay. The jail business and corrections officers are needed on a 24-hour basis. The jail operating during the global shutdown demonstrated that. The layoffs that took place in 2021 were preceded by layoffs only 20 years before, in April of 2001. Now, on the third anniversary of the 2021 layoffs, another layoff is dated for July 1st, 2024. All three layoffs affecting officers share similarities in the sense that layoffs are announced shortly after promotions and subsequent hiring waves. The two main differences between the 2021 layoff and this upcoming July 1st, 2024 layoff are that only the Division of Corrections within the Sheriff's Department is subjected to layoff, and the fact that the ones who are subjected to layoffs were just called back from a layoff. Where is the economic stability in the lives of these employees? At what point in time did Union County, as the employer, the Board of Commissioners, realize that the numbers weren't adding up? That the math wasn't making sense? Why hire just to lay off? Why uproot the lives of others and jeopardize their livelihood when their job is a necessity? Union County Corrections as a Division of Sheriff's Department is the only division, department, being laid off, yet other departments are hiring. Elizabeth has 134,283 documented residents per consensus as of 2022. Union County has 565,815 documented residents. Union County has 21 municipalities. Elizabeth represents about 24% of Union County. Essex County has 863,728 documented residents. Essex County Jail has a capacity of 2,400 inmates. During COVID-19, they reached their capacity.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's a five-minute time limit. Thank you.
Vic Bermudez, Cumberland County Department of Corrections, PBA Local 231. We went through the same thing down in Cumberland County, Gloucester County, Camden County, Mercer County, and there's one common denominator that we see as a registered Democrat. And what we're seeing here is through the Consolidation Joint and Shared Services Act, I used to worry about fighting as a Latino for civil rights, the right to work. We used to fight against that. This is worse. This is the right not to nobody work. This is getting rid of jobs, period. And for the people that don't know, these aren't people with four or five years. We got people 16 years on up that invested their time, invested their pensions, and invested their lives on the line behind that wall for this county to share services and ship inmates elsewhere where you absolutely do not save any money. And the common denominator with all these counties is you guys are cutting government jobs in half. If you sell them to a private entity, they don't, they don't, you don't, the anticipated revenue is no longer there. The cornerstone of taxpayers are the employees of the county, and you're getting rid of those. You're getting rid of those, this panel. I lived here 30 years ago. I used to jump the path to go to Rutgers. And I'm sorry to say, it looks exactly the same downtown as it did 30 years ago. This is a shame. I can't believe that you won't even entertain the gap program to make things right, but to have us come up here and keep on hollering at you guys and show the ugliness for that dog and pony show that you guys had up on the screen, showing with the nice editing and fading. I had to walk here on plywood down the sidewalk. Anybody else? It's terrible. 31 years, you trying to lay this man off. And it's disgusting the way you guys are doing it because what you're not telling everybody and what we're going, what we're going to say is, it's through unlawful practices in the job, and they call it attrition. That is the word they use to push people out, is attrition, with sending things to Perk and messing with their time and giving them write-ups. The same thing they did to us in Cumberland, same thing they did to us in Mercer and Gloucester, was come down on the people that dedicated their lives. And we got our wives and kids here that are on the line. And this is the thanks that we get. No gap program, no pension out, no nothing, no talks, no contract. Just, you know what? We're not even going to have a contract, we're just going to lay you off. And that is a black eye on all of you, all of you. I mean, it's really disgusting behavior. So you see the PBA is here, we're going to keep coming, and I understand there's going to be a vote at the end of the month, but we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
My name is Jose Velez, former Union County Correction Officer. My starting date was 1989. I did 25 years in corrections. Out of my 25 years, I spent it with him, I spent it with him, these guys. I spent my Christmas, I spent my New Years, my Thanksgiving because I couldn't go home to my family. These guys are my family. I know their kids. They know my kids. I've been retired 11 years. 11 years I've been retired, but I'm here today for my brothers and my sisters because their jobs, their family are being threatened, being jeopardized. Not one of you guys, I spent time in the jail. 24 hours, we're up in 24 hours. And at time when I wanted to go home, when my eight-hour shift was over, I couldn't, but I stayed. This job was a choice for us to better our lives and to better our families. This job was a choice for us to better our lives and to better our families. What would you do for your family? What would you do for your kids? I'm asking you, what would you do? We, as officers, have sacrificed so much, and we've asked for so little. Mind you, I did twenty-five years. Been retired eleven years, and we still suffer for those games guys played. Laying us off, rehiring us back again. It's not only us, it's our wives, it's our kids, it's our homes. Realize what you guys are doing. Please, open your eyes, open your hearts. What would you do for your job? If I came to you today and tell you today's your last day, or if you don't do this, or you don't do that, you guys are gone. There's a skeleton crew over there. A skeleton crew. When I started, we're over three hundred officers. I had three hundred brothers and sisters, Italian, Black, Hispanic. I was one when I first started, one out of six Hispanics. And I've seen my family grow and multiply. We've been from the PBA picnics to the functions. We bring our families too. So I know his kids, I know her kids, they know my children. And all this is being threatened. Guys, I ask you in God's holy name to have mercy, to realize what you are doing and what cause and effect you will have on these men and women. I thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for this time.
Good evening, Commissioner. Dave Mayto's, PBA Three Eighty-Two, Essex County Department of Corrections. Two questions. I want to know if this board has done the research on how this affects the community. About a week ago, I ran into a neighborhood store right here in Clark. And they had a family member that was arrested. They had to get their property, they had, they wanted to know information about visiting their family member and getting their property to run their store, because the family member had that property on them. So they came to me, they were directed to Clark, to Union, to Union County. And this little old lady was getting on the bus to Newark, getting the bus to Union, to Clark. Did you guys do the research how this will affect your community? Moving your people here to a whole nother county? And as far as our officers, there's a gap program sometimes for selective officers? For not everyone? Then we're not doing a gap program, but then we're hiring off-the-streets civilians? Is it because we don't want to hire Dougie as a sheriff's officer? We only want to hire certain selective officers on the Sheriff's Department? Is there bias, discrimination? Have you guys done that research? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm the president from PBA One Oh Nine, Hudson County Corrections. We got a bulk of your officers back in April of two thousand and twenty-one.
Just have your name for the record.
Benny Lee Soho. We got a bulk of your correctional officers back in April of two thousand and twenty-one. And just going to keep it brief. So a lot of those guys came over, and then they were promised the opportunity to come back home where they started at their careers and where they live at and pay taxes. And here we are today in front of you, less than two years later from when they went back to Union County. And you're telling them that they're, we're good enough to come back and settle their families back in home where they were accustomed to. And now telling them, well, now we could care less. What happens to you guys? You guys have a budget to hire fifteen sheriff officers. These guys are family, they pay taxes here, their kids go to school here. I truly believe, and I'm asking you all, at the end of the day, they didn't ask, they didn't beg to come back. They were open, the doors were open, like, guys, you want to come back home? And they went back home, right? They had a home in Hudson County Corrections. We still have twenty-three Union County Correction Officers currently hired out of department that came over back in April of two thousand and twenty-one. They chose to stay, these guys chose to come back. And I believe that, at the end of the day, the final say is going to go through you guys, not the sheriff. And you guys should truly consider and understand that these guys have been faithful to your county and to this department for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. So when you make that decision, think about your families as you think about their families and what you guys would do. Because like I said, they, I, the bulk of those laid-off officers came over to my department in two thousand and twenty-one. And they were offered an opportunity to come back home, and they did, without a doubt. Took a drop in pay to come back home to Union County. Could have stayed where we're at. But now here they are, being told that they're once again going to be let go with no promise of, of, of employment anywhere. So when you make that decision, all I ask for you guys to think about your families, think about what you guys would do for your family. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Regina Major. I stand here in representation for PBA One Ninety-Nine and as an employee of the Union County Corrections. I stand here today, not as me, but as your son, your daughter. And I'm in the position of the, one of the peoples that was laid off back in two thousand and twenty-one. It devastated me. It caused me a lot of stuff to happen. I've got anxiety that now I have to take pills for. Because imagine, you've been working for sixteen years, and then you're outside in the street with no other opportunity to do something else. And nobody helped us because they didn't care. Nobody stood up for corrections, nobody stood up for me. How would you feel if it was your son, if it was your daughter, and nobody stood up for them, but they could, and they didn't? Not only that, I'm in the military, I'm in the Navy, and they always say, thank you for your service. But at the same time, y'all not thanking me for my service when y'all put me on the street. The Navy would never. On top of that, sixteen years and you're outside. So now, I've been out, I've been working since thirteen years old. I come over here, this is my career. When it was COVID, we was essential. How is it that I have to tell my kid, mommy, why do you got to go to work? Because I'm essential, and our job is twenty-four-seven. I can't be home with my kid on holidays because I'm here serving the Union County Jail. But nobody sees that. When we was, when it was COVID, cops, they, they didn't have to go outside to work. They was not picking up people because of COVID. We was in that jail getting sick, not being able to come to work, and still coming back every day, trying to figure out, dag, you know, this is sad, and nobody cared. But we still did it and put in our time and put in our sacrifice to make sure we still got to come to work and not bring nothing back home to our families. But nobody cared. Getting anxiety, and you being in the military, not only did it affect me as my outside life, but then I had to, it had to cross over into my Navy life. Because now I got to explain to them, why am I taking pills? Because the Union County did this to me. Because they didn't care enough to say, we not going to do this to y'all. We going to gap y'all, we going to give you the opportunity. And the Southriders was a punch in the face, because soon as we got laid off, you hired, the sheriff's hired thirty people. Y'all could have hired us thirty people and called it a day. I'm here today to say, look at us as if we was your kids. And how would you feel if your kids was put in this position? And nobody did nothing, nobody said nothing, and everything swept under the table. This is two thousand and twenty-four, and something got to give. We can't keep living in the past. Whatever, I don't know why the people don't like corrections, but that's the old times. This is a new day. Something got to give. If y'all got hearts and love yourself, like, and love us the way y'all would love your kids, I'm here today to ask y'all, give us some grace. We tired, we sacrificed twenty-four-seven, we behind those walls, we deal with these inmates eight hours a day, sometimes six hours a day. And that's all I got. Have grace on us. Thank you.
Stan Terrell, President, PBA Local One Ninety-Nine. Good evening, County Manager and Commissioners of Union County. I'm here this evening to ask that the closing of the third shift across the street in Union County Hub be, and the displaced, possible displacement of the nine officers be reconsidered. The third shift provides a valuable service to the Union County community, allowing municipalities to drop off their prisoners during overnight hours and not have either hold on to their prisoners overnight or carry the burden of transporting them to Essex County and possibly waiting long wait times to drop off the inmates, taking valuable resources from the community, their police officers off the street to do so. The hub has been running effectively and efficiently, efficiency-ly with all three shifts since July first of two thousand and twenty-one, with getting police agencies in and out in record times. Eliminating the third shift could possibly have the police agencies transporting their prisoners to Essex County with longer, longer wait times, and which reduce the manpower of the officers off the roads, jeopardizing the safety of the public in those communities. With the summer fastly approaching, and crime usually rise during those summer months, having the third shift is a necessity to alleviate the burden and stress that these police departments may encounter on the overnight shift. So the PBA One Ninety-Nine and One Ninety-Nine-A is asking in this governing body to reconsider closing the night, the third shift. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and the various golden nuggets. Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. And I'm sure you're all aware that by state law, the county, it really has only three purposes, and one of them is, of course, the county jails. So just want to toss that in there. I have some questions on Reso. Reso Three Fifty-Nine has given CME Associates a hundred fifty grand in shuffling paperwork for the Ashbrook Restoration Project. CME donated a hundred fifty thousand in four years to yours and your crony campaigns, fifty-five thousand dollars just to the commissioners. We must wonder where they get all that money to donate. Is this just for the golf course holes underwater, or also for the Ashbrook swampland, the excavator illegally damaged? Reso Three Sixty is spending a hundred twenty thousand dollars for three pickup trucks for the DPW. How come this isn't buried in the sixty-six million capital bond coming up in a couple of months, like a lot of the other vehicles that are listed therein? Reso Three Sixty-Seven is approving an amendment to the twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four approved budget. I guess you're going to be talking about that in the next session. Reso Three Seventy-Nine through Three Eighty-Three is combining four old bond notes into a formal bond of forty-eight-point-five million. Finance Taylor did talk about that. Later in the year, we'll see the sixty-six million capital bond. Together, we are looking at over a hundred and ten million-dollar bonding trenches this year. A couple of questions. From the first set of the rebonding, is there any cost savings since we are trending up in interest rates? And also, what are the Section Twenty costs for this rebonding? And two, this appears we are now back to increasing our debt load, where you had claimed a decreasing debt load. Reso Three Eighty-Six is planning to apply for a four-million-dollar grant for dredging and remediation of the Clark Reservoir. I hope Senator Scutari is chasing this one down, so at least he can do one good deed. Reso Three Ninety-Two is increasing a law firm contract of Genova Burns up to eighty-five thousand dollars in Andy Kim versus Union County. It's now up to a huge amount of eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand. Last time I asked about this suit, no one could answer what it's about, and we are the defendant in the suit. I have a feeling that a lot of outside costs are probably being buried in this resolution, since this suit appears to really be a simple matter. I hope Counsel Bergen can explain. And towards general comments, there's a New Jersey bill upcoming for review and vote in the legislature in regards to allowing undisclosed stipends and other money to be given to county high-level administrators without transparency and public scrutiny. This is a direct result from the Office of the State Comptroller in his October report regarding three Union County administrators apparently grifting four hundred thousand dollars, two of them here in this room. County Manager Oatman and Director of Finance, Bibby Taylor. What is so amazing is that Senator Stack, who is sponsoring this bill, said Union County requested it. And the bill is to be retroactive back before the State Comptroller's findings of our county administrators apparent grifting. This apparently comes out of County Manager Ed Oatman being best friends with Senate President Scutari, and Scutari pulling his weight to make Oatman and Taylor's grifting charge go away. Like Commissioner Grenadis inadvertently said one time, Oatman was hired because of who he knows. Commissioner Baker, now do you understand what I say about New Jersey and corruption? With the right slimy officials at the right levels, our state can perfect legalized corruption, integrity, transparency, scrutiny, to hell with those. For this action, I now call on Senator Scutari to turn in his boyhood eagle, his boyhood Eagle Scout badge he received. This bill he is pushing besmirches the high honor of the twelve tenants of the Boy Scouts. Do you hear me, Scutari? Give back your Boy Scout badge.
I'm sure he's listening to you.
My buddy. And we must wonder what County Manager Oatman will be doing with that discretionary seven hundred grand that is now in the budget for his department, which I'll be talking about later. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting. I'm going to ask...
My name is Gina Lewis. I currently work at the jail. I got laid off in two thousand and twenty-one, which made me so devastated. I just came back September. I've only been back in nine months. I was the last person to come back. I was at Essex County for a little while, but I made a decision to come back, thinking that I was going to have my job. Now I'm going to have to tell my ten-year-old, I'm not going to have a job. Very upset about this. We just want to know, what can we do to resolve this problem? It's not fair to any of us. We can intragovernmentally transfer to the regular Sheriff's Department, and everything be fine. We already do the transport, I'm on transport all the time. We're dealing with all the inmates, with co-res, with everything. The police department, they can't handle that. They don't know how to deal with the inmates. If somebody's in a cell banging their head or they doing something, they don't know how to do the stuff we do. We're trained to do stuff like that. And you're taking resources, resources off the street. I live in Broadway, you gave them, like, I don't know, I don't know how much money, a hundred thousand dollars, whatever it was, to redo everything in Broadway. You're using all that money that, that's in the bank, but you guys don't want to pay us anything. You guys don't even want the jail to be open. We're a valuable asset to Union County. I got hired in two thousand and nineteen. I was there every day, perfect attendance for over a year and a half. Every day, I never said no to any mandates or anything, and I got laid off. I was there till the last day. And now I'm being laid off again. It's not fair. It's wrong. Y'all giving yourselves bonuses, and it's coming out in the newspapers and everything. It's wrong. Million-dollar homes that people buying, it's wrong. I come to work every day. I never call out unless I'm sick, and I come with a doctor's note. So something got to be done. It's wrong. You wouldn't want none of your kids to go through none of this, to be getting a job, losing a job. I worked hard to get through that police academy. Real hard. I was up every day, every morning, everything, dropping my kid off so she had somewhere to be. My family helped me. I lived in Union County for thirty-four years. This is wrong. That's, that's it.
How you doing? Officer Asana Labadi, Vice President, PBA Local Three Eighty-Two, the Essex County Jail in Newark. When it comes to layoffs such as this, there's an emotion side to it, which you're seeing. And then there is the fiscal side, the budget side, which is what you guys care about. If you look at it fiscally, financially, you just stood up here and bragged about how you don't have to raise taxes for multiple years in a row, zero percent for multiple years in a row. And now you're laying off an entire shift, right? Now, I don't know exactly how many officers that is, maybe nine, maybe ten. Now, I don't know exactly how many officers that is, maybe nine, maybe ten. That's a home run for you, right? You save a lot of money there. Uh, these guys are out of jobs. They're just a number to you. They're not human beings. They don't have families. Remember, we're looking at it just fiscally, financially, budget-wise. But now if we look at it heartless and coldless, like how politicians do, it's still a home run for you to give these numbers a job at the Sheriff's Department. You still save money fiscally, financially. Why hire new recruits and put them through a whole academy when you got trained people who you know are not going to leave you and you only have to put in a fraction of that amount for only a few weeks? Fiscally, you win. So you save the spots at the jail and you save money training them. You win. So the only reason why this would be happening is there's clearly something personal going on. I don't know, maybe with the sheriff. I'm from a different county, so I don't know the politics of Union County, but I do know politics. This is personal because fiscally, financially, training time length, you win. Do the right thing. Give them a job.
I know I will formally close this portion of the meeting. Um, I will ask, uh, our County Engineer Rick Mateus to come forward to speak about, um, number three fifty-nine.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Resolution Three Fifty-nine is to CME for, uh, project management and permit applications , uh, related to the Ashbrook Restoration Project. This is for all of the downstream work that's necessary for the stream to alleviate the flooding.
Thank you. Uh, and I'm going to ask County Manager Ed Oatman to speak up, uh, about the issues from Corrections.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I was going to address some of the points, but everybody left. I will say I talked to Mr. Freeman today. He was, I asked for his fiscal analysis about the savings, but he's, uh, yet to provide it. Um, I will not go into Mr. Pearl's comments about, uh, the sheriff, but I will say, uh, I'm very confident the sheriff does not act in bad faith, and I am looking forward to our hearing for Perk. Um, and thank you for your time, Chairman.
Chair, if I might also, I would like to address the comments by counsel for the PBA, and I would like to point out, but I believe they were inappropriate. As counsel knows, this body cannot and will not, you cannot respond to me. This body cannot and will not negotiate in public for you to stand up and make legal charges of bad faith and threatening of the members of the union is inappropriate as an attorney, and I would suggest that you not do it.
Have time.
Thank you. You had your time. I would suggest that you not come before this body again and speak so inappropriately. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I would like, like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Fifty-seven through Two Zero Two Four Three Six Eight and Resolutions Two Zero Two Four Dash Three Seven Nine through Two Zero Two Four Dash Four Oh Six.
Second.
Uh, a motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, was seconded by Vice Chairwoman Leon, Clerk of the Board. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner, uh, Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodek.
Abstain on Three Ninety-One, aye to the rest.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Aye.
Commissioner Grenados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Aye.
And Chairwoman Palmieri Mudeg.
Aye.
Chair, let the record reflect, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions with the exception of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Three Nine One, where you have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk of the Board, um, I would like you to read the intro into the record, um, uh, of the amendments to the budget, please.
Certainly, Chairwoman. The budget amendments are as follows. Twenty Twenty Four Budget Amendments. Sheet Four, Number Three, Miscellaneous Revenues, Section A, Local Revenues, Interest on Investments and Deposits from seven hundred and fifty thousand to one million four hundred and seventy thousand and ninety-four dollars. Sheet Four C, Total Section A, Local Revenues, from thirty million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars to thirty million nine hundred and ten thousand and ninety-four dollars. Sheet Six, Number Three, Miscellaneous Revenues, Section C, State Assumption of Costs of County Social and Welfare Services and Psychiatric Facilities, Supplemental Social Security Income from two million eight hundred and fifty thousand to one million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and six dollars. Total Section C, State Assumption of Costs of County Social and Welfare Services and Psychiatric Facilities, from two million eight hundred and fifty thousand to one million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and six dollars. Sheet Eight, Number Three, Miscellaneous Revenues, Section E, Special Items of General Revenue Anticipated with Prior Written Consent of Director of Local Government Services, Other Special Items, Reimbursement from State and Federal Programs, Number Two, Indirect Costs, from six hundred thousand dollars to one million dollars. Total Section E, Special Items of General Revenue Anticipated with Prior Written Consent of Director of Local Government Services, Other Special Items, from seventy-nine million six hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars to eighty million twelve thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. Sheet Nine, Number Three, Miscellaneous Revenues, Total Section A, Local Revenues, from thirty million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars to thirty million nine hundred and ten thousand and ninety-four dollars. Total Section C, State Assumption of Costs of County Social and Welfare Services and Psychiatric Facilities, from two million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one million seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and six dollars. And finally, Total Section E, Special Items of General Revenue Anticipated with Prior Written Consent of Director of Local Government Services, Other Special Items, from seventy-nine million six hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars to eighty million twelve thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. Those are the budget amendments to the twenty twenty-four county budget.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on the twenty twenty-four Union County budget. Kindly state your name and town of residence for the record and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the Commissioner Board and various golden nuggets. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood. Uh, I looked through the executive budget and, of course, the normal budget for approval and found a lot of wiggly numbers on many line items. Just listing the ones impacted by multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars, we find the following. Uh, the County Manager's Office adds seven hundred thousand dollars to its line item, which is an increase of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and in any of this, there was no explanation as to why he did that. The Board of Elections, up five hundred thousand dollars, forty percent increase, I understand, uh, you know, sooner or later, somebody will say, for the presidential elections and the added miscellaneous elections around the town. Uh, the Division of Motor Vehicles, that was up seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is sixteen percent increase, and I, uh, for what I can figure out, it's updating fueling sites. Uh, the Community Development and Housing Line Item, uh, down three hundred eighty thousand dollars, which is a decrease of sixty-six percent, no reason given. Uh, Division of Strategic Planning, up four hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is a forty-three percent increase, no reason was given anywhere. The Sheriff's Office, this is interesting because they were here talking about it, uh, that's up four point seven million dollars, which is an eight hundred percent increase, and no reason is, is given as to that increase. Uh, the Division of Corrections, which, gentlemen, I don't know if he left or not, but anyway, Division of Corrections actually saw a decrease of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which from what I guess what I understand, it's, it's they're canceling the third, uh, shift at the jail. Uh, the Office of Director in the Public Safety adds one point two million dollars, up twelve, one thousand two hundred percent, no reason given. Emergency Medical Services, up six hundred thousand dollars, twenty-fourth percent increase. Uh, from what I understand, it's a takeover of the Plainfield EMS. Division of Police, uh, this is interesting. It's up four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but no reason is given, and part of, part of their budget now is ten million dollars in ARPA monies, and this is a one-shot deal, the ARPA money, so, uh, we're going to be worrying about next year about ten million dollars missing a hole in the budget. County Prosecutor's Office, up one point eight million dollars, which is a seven percent increase. Uh, I understand thirty-six license readers, the Arrive program, uh, there's a lot of outreach programs he has and initiatives. Corner Psychiatric was down three hundred thousand dollars, down two percent, no reason was given. Division of Social Services, for some reason, the salaries are down five hundred thousand and the other expenses are up six hundred and thirty thousand, and really no reason was given. I see there's maybe a central call center, uh, being done. Uh, Division of Parks, the Office of Director is adding four million dollars, which is up four hundred percent. Uh, there's no initiative, but my guess could be this, uh, Planetarium or the Clark Reservoir you're talking about. Uh, the Recreation Facilities adds one point two million, which is fourteen percent increase, and I saw maybe stables, riding area upgrades, a little bit of paving. See, this, this specific to the other expense increases fifteen point four million dollars on these line items, and ten million, five hundred thousand dollars has no reason given in any of these books or from what I heard. Uh, the public has no idea what this is about, and yet you're going to be voting on it. Uh, that's transparency. You know, my main concern, of course, is the County Manager's Office, which is getting seven hundred thousand dollars, which is his discretion to spend, and I'm just worrying about this law that's coming up on the, the vote. Uh, let's go into the budget factors. The debt, let's start with a little bit of good news that, yes, the debt is going down. I see the debt service actually decreased from seventy-nine million to seventy-five million, so that's good. I don't know what the overall debt numbers are as to gross or net debt. Maybe, uh, Taylor could tell about it. Uh, one thing is the, uh, the running fund balance is now a hundred and ninety-six million dollars. Uh, surplus remaining is a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. And one thing on that page is the reserves, which is now went from a hundred million to a hundred and fifty million. Something screwy there. That, there's a lot of money out there reserved for some reason or other. The Open Space Trust Fund, this is not a good story here, uh, they're collecting from fourteen million last year to over fifteen million. Open Space Trust Fund, you're transferring a lot of money.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're done. Thank you. Let's go. Time's up. I'm sure you do.
Okay, seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the public hearing and call Director Bibby Taylor to the microphone to address.
So first and foremost, the county of units does not use one-time revenue sources with reoccurring expenses. All of the expenses that are in the budget that are offset by ARPA are one-time expenses. The ten million dollars that we previously talked about are for public safety equipment and for expenses associated with the Prosecutor's Office that you will not see again next year because that revenue source will not also be here. We do not use one-time revenue sources again as many of the other local units tend to do, and that's why we maintain a triple-A bond rating because we are quite conservative. With regard to our debt as far at year-end twenty twenty-three, let me just give a little bit of background. In twenty thirteen, the percentage of net was point eight seven percent. As of the year-end twenty twenty-three, it is now at point five seven percent. The ordinances that we adopt on a regular basis, we ensure that we are paying off more debt than we are reauthorizing, and that is again still consistent with all of the ratings that we have consistently received that show that we are conservative in our budgeting practices as well as our management of debt. With regard to the later, the items that were increased, I can just simply go through them if you wish, Madam Chair. I'll defer to you to provide an explanation. That's fine. So with regard to the County Manager's Office, we do know that the lease for Reynolds Hospital is up at the end of this year. As a result, we do need professionals in order to help us identify alternate space as well as a plan in order to modify our certificate of need, hence the need for an increase in the OE line item. The County Clerk's Office, yes, it is a presidential election year. As a result, we do have many more people that vote and there are a lot more activities. So yes, there is an increase in the OE budget. With regard to the Division of Motor Vehicles, we have an aging fleet. We also have underground storage tanks in many of our facilities that we need to maintain and upgrade, so there is an increase in that. The Division of Strategic Planning into governmental relations, that is actually, if the Speaker looked at it, there, that's an offset to community services. So the Division of Community Services decreased by two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, and then there was a corresponding offset and an increase into the Strategic Planning Division. So it was just a movement of operations between units of government. The Sheriff's Office did increase its operating expenses again because of one-time public safety equipment that was needed in order to mitigate any emergencies that you will not see prospectively. Same thing with the Department of the, um, Public Safety Director. That is a one point two million dollar increase, again, public safety-related equipment that you will not see again next year. The Medical Examiner's Office, unfortunately, we do have the need because of many people that are passing and because of the statewide protocols associated with some of the deaths, we still do need to do autopsies because of COVID and verify the passing. So that unfortunately, we do have an increase in OE related to that. Medical Services, that's because we are adding new staff to that because of the shared services which reap revenue to offset these expenses, so you will see that in the revenue side of the House. With regard to recreational facilities, yes, there is a one point eight, one point one million dollar increase, but you'll also see an offsetting increase in the recreational facility fees on the revenue side. Division of Social Services, a six hundred and thirty-eight hundred thousand dollar increase. That is because there are some state assumption costs that we do have to budget for, so those numbers are provided by the state. Overall, I will just simply say that our budget is reflective of a one point seven five percent increase, which is something that many public entities in the state of New Jersey do not maintain. In fact, many of them have not had four zeros throughout the pandemic. Because of our financial practices, I will tell you that we have been very conservative for the past ten years. We have consistently been holding ourselves lower than the allowable, allowable amount that we are allowed to raise in taxes. With that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to answer any other questions the board may have.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Grenados.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just first off, wow, that's amazing. One breath, he didn't even take a breath during that whole entire statement. I was like, he's going to add a County Manager. Wow, passion right there. But just correct me if I'm wrong, um, Finance Director. Based off Moody's Rating Agency and the Global Authority on Financial Performance, have they not stated Union County has a strong management team, conservative budgeting practices, manageable debt, and stronger financial performance than its peers throughout the state of New Jersey?
That is correct. That is a reflection of our twenty twenty-four rating.
Thank you very much, Finance Chair. I mean, Finance Director. You too, Finance Chair. I got you both. Thanks, Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Williams and then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was going to say something a little bit, um, similar that, you know, Moody's is the ratings agency that, um, that all of the counties go by, right? And as, as, uh, my colleague said, they are the global authority. I don't know what authority other people have. Um, and, um, I thought the mic dropped. It should have, but it didn't. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, well, uh, I've said before that, uh, we have smart business practices, we have a smart, uh, operating budget, um, and it comes through collaboration between the department heads and, and the county manager. But I do want to ask a question because it was raised, uh, about the surplus, the budget surplus. Uh, so could you explain that so that it's understood?
Absolutely.
Understood and grounded.
So we generate surplus by essentially holding the line on filling some vacancies throughout the year, by aggressively going after all revenue sources that do the county. And so you'll see that in our indirect costs, you'll see that in our fringe benefit costs, you'll see that in all of the revenues on the grants throughout the year that we tend to apply for and then offset some of our operating. to apply for and then offset some of our operations by. So in order to mitigate any emergencies that the county has, and I'll give you a prime example, during Hurricane Sandy, during the pandemic, we were able to use our surplus funds in order to help many of the county residents that were impacted by these emergencies without having to issue new debt to pay for those operations. We were able to float all of those operations without having to access the market. And so when many professionals, at the beginning of the pandemic, were doom and gloom, that essentially costs are going to skyrocket, there's not going to be any revenue sources, the County of Union maintained its surplus in order to continue operations and open up the first county-run testing site in order to help many of its residents and residents throughout the state of New Jersey. So that's the need for surplus. It also ensures that we have financial health, flexibility, in order to continue all operations without continuously having to go out and issue emergency appropriations and the such when the need arises.
Right. Now, just one other point, and correct me if I'm wrong, aren't we obligated through state regulation or state statutes to maintain a certain level of surplus?
Unfortunately, there is no statutory requirement for the amount of surplus you need to maintain. However, I will just also give you a little bit of an example. Back in 2012, the County of Union at year-end had sixteen million dollars worth of surplus. As a result, in 2012, we also had to have a huge layoff associated with maintaining operations, because a lot of the revenue streams were not available to help offset operations. Because of our financial footing, we've been able to, one, continue to go to the negotiating table, pay a fair wage, we've been able to maintain our workforce, while still looking at ways to achieve economy inefficiencies throughout the year.
Okay, my memory-
That's for school districts, that's what you're thinking of.
School districts, right. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay. Dr. Telly, thank you very much for your explanation today, as well as all of your work on this budget, along with your team that is sitting in the back. Thank you all for the hard work. I know this isn't something that happens overnight, and we do appreciate all of the efforts that you put into doing this, maintaining a zero percent increase for so many years, and then just being able to keep it at a low increase this year. I know that on behalf of our residents, we are all very grateful, so thank you again. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2024-369 through 2024-378.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella and was seconded by Commissioner Baker. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Aye.
Commissioner Dellisfort?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Leon?
Aye.
Chairwoman Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
At the record reflect, you have nine votes in the affirmative on the Resolutions 369 through 378.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to present our Commissioner reports and comments, and I will start with Commissioner Bodak.
We'd like to invite all-
Sorry.
We'd like to invite all residents with special needs to participate in the Paint in the Park on Saturday, May 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Warren Acre Park. The Paint in the Park event offers a unique opportunity for participants to express their artistic talent amid the natural scenery of Warren Acre Park. This event is hosted by the Union County Office for Persons with Disability and Special Needs under the Division of Individual and Family Support Services of the Union County Department of Human Services. The event is free of charge, but registration is required. To register for this event or for more information about other programs or events hosted by the Union County Office for Persons with Disabilities and Special Needs, please visit our website or call 908-527-4781. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dellisfort.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to applaud our fiscal departments and, of course, the Fiscal Committee for preparing such a conservative budget. And so, you know, again, for that, I applaud you. I'd also like to take a moment to discuss the successful hosting of our inaugural Haitian flag-raising ceremony this past Monday, which saw a wonderful turnout. My heartfelt thanks really goes out to all of the coordinators and attendees for their contributions to its success. In keeping with our commitment to creating cultural exchange and appreciation within our community, we're pleased to announce the continuation of our celebration throughout the month of May. This month, we're also featuring an exhibit showcasing Haitian art located just outside these doors, offering a glimpse into Haiti's vibrant cultural tapestry. Residents interested in viewing the showcase can do so from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And again, our gratitude extends to the talented artists whose contributions have enriched this month-long tribute. So once again, we sincerely thank all of those who have helped make this month possible. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mirabella.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to, is it on? Yeah, I want to first start by thanking County Manager Oatman, all our directors, particularly Director Taylor, for the fine work on the budget for 2024. Commissioner Williams did a great job leading the Fiscal Committee. I was proud to be a part of that team. But it really is a lot of hard work to put that budget together that is fiscally responsible, that provides excellent service to our county residents, and I was very proud earlier this evening to vote for it. If anybody needs to have any indication of the health of the finances of Union County, it was mentioned before, but needs to be highlighted, the triple-A bond rating that this county has and maintained over many years is an objective indication of the quality of the leadership, the quality of the management, and the quality of the finances in our county. And that is by an independent rating agency, and very few counties in the entire state of New Jersey even have a triple-A bond rating. It's probably four or five. So I thank everyone who put this budget together, and it meets our needs at a fiscally responsible cost, and I always appreciate Director Taylor being smarter than the questioners in this community. I do want to also say that from the corrections perspective, I always appreciate when people want to come and give their opinions. I don't always appreciate the sarcasm sometimes that goes with that, although I do understand that it's a very personal and very emotional issue, particularly for those that are being impacted. But I will say that I have full confidence in the County Manager and the Sheriff to minimize any impact as best they can to any employees in our county. Couldn't disagree with hardly any of them when they said that they work hard, they're dedicated, they're public safety professionals. That's all very true. And, you know, for various reasons, it's come to the Board that this is something that we need to move forward with, although I for one want to make sure that we do our best, and I'm sure we will, to minimize the impact to any particular employee. Two other quick things, Madam Chair. I am happy to announce that we're expanding the reusable bag recycling program to tackle the surplus of bags in our communities in collaboration with various partners, including the Union County Board of Recycling and Planning and the Goat Tote Incorporated. With New Jersey's Get Past Plastic Bad in effect, most people are using reusable bags, particularly if I remember to bring them into the store. But surplus bags are accumulating due to forgetfulness and grocery stores, and people really need them, they're compiling them. Food pantries and food banks are struggling to keep up with the demand for reusable bags and are no longer allowed to use single-use plastic bags. Residents across Union County can drop them off, these gently reusable bags, in any one of fourteen designated locations listed on our website, so I encourage people to go to ucnj.org and look at that site. Goat Tote will collect them, clean them, sanitize them, and redistribute them to the community food bank in New Jersey and also other local food pantries. So please take your unused bags and get them into the right hands, and we'll take care of them from there. Lastly, Madam Chair, I was able to attend a performance of the Golden Girls at Hamilton Stage, and I really was delighted to be there. I love the programming that's happening at UC PAC and the Hamilton Stage. I thank Director Durbin Drake and Executive Director of the UC PAC, Deanna Hunt, for all their efforts providing entertainment at a minimal cost to the community, and it really is a wonderful place to see a show. And I encourage people to go on the UC PAC website and find a show, and go visit Rowway, go to a restaurant and see a show, you won't be disappointed. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me, I'd like to add my appreciation to County Manager Oatman, Deputy County Manager Wagner, our Finance Director Taylor, and our Fiscal Committee and everyone who worked on the budget. It's another example of the serious attitude that Union County takes to serving our residents, and I know we will continue to do that, and I appreciate the work done. I also would like to thank everybody who worked on Wild Earth Fest, our Parks Department, and other staff who were up at Trailside last week, or week before last. It was, I think, it was a beautiful day, we had a record number of people, there were all kinds of activities for children and families, and great music, and I think a good time was had by all, it was a great job by everybody involved. And I would encourage everybody who hasn't had a chance to go look at the Senior Arts Show, which is over at the Union College Building at the Votec Complex in Scotch Plains, to go have a look at the really impressive art done by our seniors. Another thing that is reflecting our goal of keeping our parks cleaner is an initiative that we're launching in Warren Acre Park to enhance recycling and reduce litter. So we have obtained nineteen, a hundred and ninety-six gallon recycling and trash containers and dumpsters for recycling and trash, and a satellite lifter system and pickup truck to help in waste collection. So this is a time when our parks, and especially Warren Acre Park, is very heavily used in the spring and summer seasons, and this automation of trash and recycling pickups will improve the quality of the environment in the park for all of its visitors, and there will be guidelines posted in English and Spanish. So this was made possible by my colleagues, so the County Board of Commissioners, and the Parks, Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Rutgers Environmental Steward Program. And it's funded through the Recycling Enhancement Act Grant and the Clean Communities Grant from the New Jersey DEP. So you can find more information at ucnj.org/recycle. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All residents are invited to bring their personal documents and sensitive papers to the county's next free paper shredding event. There are two events, which will take place on Friday, May 17th, and Sunday, May 19th. These events are rain or shine, and will start at 9:00 a.m. and end at 1:00 p.m., unless the trucks are at capacity at the following locations. May 17th, in the parking lot of the Hillside Pool located at 1209 Central Avenue, and on May 19th, in the parking lot of the Berkeley Heights Municipal Complex located at 29 Park Avenue. For the complete 24 or 2024 paper shredding schedule and information on all recycling programs hosted by Union County, visit the recycling section of our website. And that concludes my comments and my report. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments tonight really are focused on voting. Union County residents who are interested in helping voters at polling locations on Election Day this year still have time to apply to become poll workers. In our county, poll workers will earn three hundred dollars for the day. It is a long day, starting at 5:15 a.m. through at least 8:15 after the close of polls at 8:00 p.m. This year's primary election is held on Tuesday, June 4th, and poll workers, as we know, perform essential services for us on Election Day, ensuring that every eligible voter is afforded an opportunity to exercise their constitutional right to vote. So to apply online, visit the Union County Board of Elections at ucnj.org/pollworker. And we do thank you in advance for your participation in this essential civic activity. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados.
I'll bank my time. Thank you, Chair.
County Council Bergen.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing from me.
Okay. County Manager Oatman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm banking Sergio's time.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Thank you, Chairwoman. First and foremost, I would like to thank our Finance Director Taylor for all her hard work preparing this year's budget, our County Manager, Deputy County Manager, our Fiscal Chair, Commissioner Williams, and all the directors and staff. On another note, some information for our Union County voters. For those that vote in person, Union County Clerk Joanna Jope advises voters that they can view their sample ballots for our June 4th primary election online at the County Clerk's elections website, unioncountyvotes.com. In addition, voters will receive a printed copy of their sample ballot in the mail. Due to the recent changes this year mandated by the federal courts, it is crucial for voters to take time to familiarize themselves with their sample ballots beforehand. Sample ballots will be mailed out approximately two weeks before Election Day. For more information about the County Clerk's election services, please visit unioncountyvotes.com or contact the Elections Division at 908-527-4996, or ucvote@ucnj.org. This is all from me tonight. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. On behalf of the Union County Board of County Commissioners and the County of Union, we would like to extend our congratulations to Union College of Union County, New Jersey, for being recognized as a semifinalist for the prestigious 2025 Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence by the Aspen Institute College Excellence Program. This remarkable achievement emphasizes Union College's strong dedication to creating equitable student success and advancing excellence in education. Your commitment to empowering students and promoting a supportive learning environment exemplifies the values of our community. As a semifinalist for the Aspen Prize, Union College stands among the nation's leading institutions that are pioneering innovative practices to enhance student outcomes and promote inclusive excellence. And I know we have Dr. Jamie Siegel here today. She's always at our meetings and representing Union College, and it's very much appreciated that you're here, month after month, at our meetings. And I know for myself, and I think I speak from all my colleagues, it's such a privilege for us to have Union College as a partner. The students are fantastic. I know I love, anytime there's anything going on there, it's exciting to be a part of it. We love to support you and your students, and we do value your support as well. So congratulations on this, and thank you for always being here as well. And with that, I think I will ask for a motion to close.
No moves now, Chair.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Leon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night. Yes, oh, that's right, oh, dang.
Happy Mother's Day.
Sunday's Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day.
Forgot about it. And, yes, aunts, grandmas, sisters. Yes, aunts, grandmas, sisters.